Good evening, everyone. We are January 17th, our first voting meeting of the new year 2024. Could we do roll call for council? If I could ask the Borough Manager?
Yes, Councilmember Chimalski.
President.
Serna.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Elam.
Here.
Councilmember Frey.
Here.
Vice President Kingsley.
Here.
President Sokolowski.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is council president announcements. Just wanted to let everyone know that Borough Council held an executive session prior to the regularly scheduled work session on property, personnel, and legal matters. As an education to both new council members, new residents, and a reminder to all who attend public meetings on the third Wednesday of the month, I'm sorry, who attend public meetings, the third Wednesday of the month is designated as our voting meeting where the majority of our decisions are placed before council for consideration of approvals and/or adoption. This includes matters of policy and ordinance, approval of prior month's meeting minutes, work session, and voting meeting minutes, and approval of the monthly budget financials and expenditures. We also will discuss any unfinished and new business related to operations and policies that occur throughout the month. You will find copies of the meeting minutes posted on our website and made available to public once approved by council. This means the minutes are available the following month, and the recordings are available on the Thursday post the meeting. You can watch the meetings on Comcast Channel 965 at 7:00 PM on Thursdays, and then it will play in loops throughout. And on Verizon, it's Channel 20. I just wanted to start kind of educating folks on when and how the meetings run, just so that everyone understands the process of Borough Council and how we work through our priorities. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So what we're looking for here is if any public has comment on any of the agenda items that they've seen prior to the meeting. Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll move on to presentations. Tonight, we are proud to have a presentation for the swearing-in of our fire marshals by Mayor Aronson. Mayor Aronson, could you go to the podium and swear in two fire marshals this evening? Tim Gunning and Megan Klosterman.
Yes. If you raise my hand, you can't do me. I, Tim Gunning.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania. And I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to. Congratulations. I, Megan Klosterman.
Aye, Megan Klosterman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to. Congratulations.
Once Megan's done signing, we'll do some pictures.
One, two, three.
Thank you for your service, both of you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the commendation for SWAT Officer of the Year to Officer Caleb Smith. If I could ask Chief Lennon to come up to the podium to issue the commendation to Officer Smith for the SWAT Officer of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be awarding Officer Smith the SWAT Officer of the Year. This is a plaque that he received from the SWAT team. Officer Smith is a six-year member of the SWAT team. In speaking with the leadership of the SWAT team, he's become a mentor and trainer to new officers that come on to the SWAT team. Caleb had a really big this year on the SWAT team. He was responsible for coordinating a full-scale live amphibious response tactical training on the Schuylkill River over the summer, which took months to plan and coordinate. The training included not only the SWAT team, but also the fire departments, urban search and rescue, bomb squad, and drone units. Officer Smith is also the fourth member of our department to receive this award. So we want to thank you very much for your dedication.
Do you have family members, too?
Just to the, there you go. All right, one, two, three. Am I good? Thank you.
All right, also tonight, we're honoring several of our officers, two of our citizens, and Bill Weber from the ambulance. If we could have Officer Montowski, Officer Perez, Officer Cammerer, Officer Hall, Officer Walter, Officer Bond, Sergeant Sturdy. Bill Weber couldn't be here, he's sick tonight. His brother Bob is here to represent him. Mary G. McQuirons and Brianna Hoskins. Officer Bond, Detective Bond actually is out on call right now. There was an emergency that he got called to, so he's out doing what our officers normally do, and here he comes right now in the door. If you were here for the November 1st council meeting, on your way into the meeting, you might have actually witnessed this incident, which took place right here across the street from our police station. On Wednesday, November 1st, at 5:30 PM, officers of the Conshakka Police Department were dispatched at the intersection of Fayette Street and West Fourth Avenue for the report of two unconscious individuals in a vehicle. Officer Montowski was the first on scene and located the vehicle, partially obstructing the southbound lanes of Fayette Street. Officer Perez responded and blocked traffic while Detective Walter responded on foot from the police station. Officer Perez leaned into the driver's side and observed the vehicle was still in gear. Officer Perez then attempted to place the transmission into park. While doing so, the unconscious operator's foot slipped off of the brake pedal and the vehicle briefly began to move further forward onto Fayette Street. Without delay, Officer Perez was able to put the vehicle into park. Sergeant Sturdy arrived and assisted Officer Perez in pulling the operator from the driver's seat as Detective Walter pulled the passenger from the passenger seat. Both individuals were fully unconscious. Detective Walter had requested Narcan over the radio. Sergeant Sturdy retrieved a Narcan spray box from his patrol vehicle. Officer Montowski and a Good Samaritan, Mary G. McQuirons, were rendering lifesaving aid to the operator, who was unconscious and laying in the roadway. Sergeant Sturdy provided Narcan to Officer Montowski, who immediately administered two doses. McQuirons, a registered nurse, provided sternum rubs while also attempting to speak with the operator. At the same time, Detective Walter, Bill Weber, who's the assistant chief of Nar birth ambulance, and Brianna Hoskins were on the vehicle passenger side rendering lifesaving aid to the front passenger. Officers Hall and Cammerer, who were returning from tactical training, heard the radio transmissions and responded with additional Narcan. Officer Cammerer administered another dose of Narcan to the operator, while Officer Hall provided Detective Walter with Narcan for the passenger. Detective Bond arrived and recognized responding officers require protection from oncoming traffic. As such, Detective Bond quickly placed a patrol vehicle on East Third Avenue to mitigate northbound traffic flow while directing traffic away from the incident scene. As a result of the heroics, Officer Montowski, Perez, Cammerer, Hall, Detective Walter, and Bond, Sergeant Sturdy, Bill Weber, and along with Good Samaritans, Mary G. McQuirons, and Brianna Hoskins, both of these individuals survived this alarming event. So I just want to thank all of these officers and everyone that stopped, because this really was a dramatic incident. Each one of the officers will receive a commendation along with our citizens, and then each officer will also receive a commendation bar or pin that they'll wear on their Class A uniform. Brianna Hoskins. Mary G. McQuirons. And Matt Bond, who just walked by. Phil Walter.
We'll get everyone up first, together first, just kind of. Thanks, there you go. Everyone just take one step to their left. There we go. All right. No, they're all good there. One, two, three.
Are you distracting him out of the car?
That was actually just.
Because I seen his body going down, and then somebody was like, who's in the car? Oh, you're welcome. This little lady was in the car with me, was born for my birthday, and I said, stay in the car.
Congratulations to everyone. On behalf of Borough Council, thank you all.
That was fun.
It's always fun for celebrations. Okay, are we ready? All right, next item on the agenda for this evening is land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. This evening, we're going to consider adopting Ordinance 01-2024, revising the borough's shade tree regulations. At this point, Mr. Peters, would you like to just give us a summary of the ordinance and the revisions?
Sure. We talked about this a couple of times, but there are two new members of council. This ordinance, while it appears long, it only does two things. One is it makes clear that for purposes of enforcement of the borough's shade tree regulations, they can be enforced by municipal arborist if the borough appoints and has one, by the code enforcement official, or by such other person as the borough may designate. Previously, it only identified the municipal arborist. The borough does not always have nor currently have a municipal arborist, so amending it makes it consistent with actual borough practices. The second is that it clarifies that when notices of violation are issued, under the ordinance, they are issued via regular mail. Previously stated regular and certified mail, there's no requirement for certified mailing, so this clarifies the borough's actual practices. Again, it appears long, but those are the only two things it does. It's just municipal arborist, the term municipal arborist appears throughout that section of the borough's code of ordinances. Substantively, aside from those two things, there are no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement on 12/20. Question for administration and council, were there any public feedback to either administration or council on the resolution proposal?
I didn't hear anything.
With that, could I have a motion to adopt Ordinance 01-2024, revising the shade tree ordinance regulations?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion carries. Oh, sorry.
She's efficient.
Yeah.
My reader.
All in favor?
All in favor? Had to regroup. All opposed. Motion carries. All right. Public can find full version of the approved ordinance on the website in the Borough Code section, Chapter 25, Trees of the Conshakka Code of the Borough of Conshakka, or by calling the Borough offices, which can be obtained free of charge. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is the approval of minutes of our December meetings for December 6th work session and December 20th voting meeting. So if I could have a motion to approve and adopt the December 6th and 20th regular meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. A motion to approve the December-ending treasurer's report and accounts payable in the amount of $698,23883. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries for both. Thank you. Totally drilled the fly. All right, next up is unfinished business. So we have some, no unfinished business this evening, correct?
Correct.
How about some new business as the next item on the agenda? So Mike and Steph, is there any new business that we want to clarify? I believe that we have a couple items. So the first item looks like it is the annual Montgomery County St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 16th, 2024.
Yep, that is correct. So the request has come in to host the parade again on Fayette Street in Conshakka. The date proposed is March 16th at 2:00 PM. The rain date is Saturday, March 23rd. There will be a 5K that is hosted by number two fire company that starts at 12:30 on the 16th. They have met with the Borough Administration, they have met all of the event requirements to host a special event in the Borough of Conshakka, which includes insurance, et cetera. It is in front of you this evening for consideration. If so inclined, this would allow them to move forward for planning purposes.
Any additional questions related to the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
Can we not have rain?
We'll talk to Mother Nature.
Or snow.
Okay, hearing no questions, could I have a motion to approve the annual Montgomery County St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 16th, 2024, with the rain date being March 23rd?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, I want to roll. Okay, next item is for consideration of approving the Washington Street Associates' escrow release in the amount of $187,213.68 plus interest. Anyone have any questions related to the Washington Street escrow release?
Just for the public, that's for 401-433 to Brian O'Neill, correct?
That is correct. And just to clarify, that property has been sold to another entity, so the escrow that is on file with the borough is no longer applicable. So because that sale has closed, the applicant is requesting return of the escrow dollars that were originally deposited in 2016.
Thank you, Steph. Okay, so with that information, is there a motion to approve the escrow release in the amount of $187,213.68 plus interest?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is consideration of approving a tuition reimbursement for Officer Caleb Smith for completing the 2023 fall semester, and consider approving his request for enrollment for the 2024 spring semester.
So part of the police collective bargaining agreement is the stipulation that they are given an education reimbursement. The requirement is that they have to, while the money is budgeted on an annual basis based off the CBA, they still do need to request authorization through Borough Council. So you do have two individual, two officers, that were here in front of you this evening that are requesting reimbursement for either a course that was completed or permission to proceed with enrolling and taking a course in the 2024 spring semester. They have met the requirements that are included in the CBA, so this evening is just the final authorization for the dollar amount to be refunded, reimbursed.
Any questions related to the reimbursement? Okay, so with that, I will need a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement for Officer Caleb Smith for 2023 fall semester in the amount of $3,761.89, and to also approve his request for enrollment and reimbursement for the 2024 spring semester in the amount of $38,812.85, and it's all per the collective bargaining stipulations.
I'll make that, I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And that next motion would just be for Eric Hall, based off the same reasoning and justification.
Great. So Officer Eric Hall is asking for 2024 spring semester tuition and enrollment request in the amount of $1,860 plus the cost of books, also per the collective bargaining agreement. Any questions on Officer Hall? Okay, with that, could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is consider approving Resolution 01-2024 to appoint David Brea to the zoning hearing board. We had interviews for zoning hearing board members, and Mr. Brea interviewed with us. Anyone have any reservations or comments?
He was the guy that got the temporary, the substitute, and now he's just going to take Allen's spot, correct?
Correct.
Moving from alternate to full-time.
Right.
So David Brea interviewed for the alternate zoning hearing board position with Borough Council. He was appointed into that position and served in that position, and he served well. Allen expressed his resignation from the zoning hearing board, because again, we're keeping him busy with other responsibilities. Therefore, we need to fill that full-time vacancy on the zoning hearing board, and David has expressed his interest. So because he already serves in the alternate position, we are requesting that you consider him for appointment this evening, and then if so inclined and the motion passes, then we will advertise for a new alternate position on the zoning hearing board, because that position does play an important role, so that the business matters of the zoning hearing board can continue to move forward in the case of a member not being able to attend.
All good?
Yep, all good.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve Resolution 01-24, formally appointing David Brea to the current permanent vacancy on zoning board?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, David. All right, next up is... ratifying the court-ordered settlement stipulation for a tax assessment decrease for the property at 2 Ash Street. Stephanie, do you wanna just give us a little bit?
Sure.
Of information around that?
2 Ash Street is the building that currently houses Jacob's Engineering. They previously came in, came to the Montgomery County Tax Assessment Board and requested a reduction in their tax assessment. That was granted by the County Board of Assessment. After that, they came back and they appealed the decision of the Board of Assessment for the county and asked for a further decrease. That was then approved by a stipulation by a court. So it was a court-ordered stipulation to decrease, um, for, decrease their tax assessment for the borough that amounts to an additional $6,419.59 decrease on their property taxes. Again, because it's court-ordered, you are ratifying, not approving this evening.
Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions related to that court-ordered rat, um, decrease? With that, I'm looking for a motion to ratify the court-ordered settlement stipulation for tax assessment decrease for the property at 2 Ash Street in the amount of $6,419.59.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Just as a clarifying point when it comes to tax assessment decrease, the borough is under the, um, guidance of Borough Council. The Borough Administration does monitor the tax assessment decrease requests that come into the County Board of Assessment, and we do actively engage in that conversation with the County Board of Assessment because of the direct impact it has on this real estate taxes and the overall bottom line of the borough. So we've been asked to do that by Borough Council, and we will continue to do that in conjunction with our tax lawyer, who is through Eastburn and Gray.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, consider approving the designation of a senior council member in the borough council structure. So this one is, um, kind of a new and exciting role that, um, I'd like to propose to council for consideration. What we did was, um, historically, our council structure, we, um, have people that have been serving on council for greater than, um, two terms, three terms, four terms. Historically, we've had some folks self-appoint themselves as senior council members. Um, and, you know, what comes as a senior council member is, was yet to be defined. I do think that it's important to recognize our, um, public servants that do put their time in and really are committed to the role. With that, I asked Steph to help me create a, a council structure to actually officially, um, make a job description for a senior council member. So with that, what, um, the, the, um, kind of the job description would be is, um, having a minimum of eight years' experience on council, two four-year terms. The term would be two fiscal years with an option to renew for one additional two years as applicable. Uh, but we don't want anyone to serve in senior council for more than four years total. That will give other people opportunity if they're longstanding in the structure. And important to note that we really only want one senior council member in any, um, given term. So we don't wanna have like five senior council members, but, um, we thought one would be a good one. Responsibilities would include acting as the sounding board for council president and vice president in any matter which may be determined appropriate and ensure that the needs are met, uh, prior to regular public meetings. Assist as assigned to report our borough updates, um, as assigned by the president on specific agenda items. That could be special events, upcoming work session topics, community messages. Also, in coordination with the president and vice president, lead designated discussions and work sessions or committee meetings as assigned. So what we're trying to really do is have more engagement with the whole group and having other, um, members of council actively participate and kind of take a lead role in some of the work that we do, either in council sessions or outside of council sessions. Serve as a resource to residents who may have concerns regarding, uh, contact with elected officials through normal communication channels as set forth by the borough policy. Serve on borough boards and commissions as a senior council member as determined by, and assigned by full council. Serve as a liaison between Borough Council and the community for sponsored community events and to help ensure these events are successful, inclusive, and accessible to all members of the community, borough community, and providing post-event reports as requested, um, as well as suggestions for improvement. So I'm really trying to bring a feedback loop in some of the things that get done that we're not all taking part in and being able to keep us all kind of in the know and sharing with the residents what may have happened or occurred or, um, any new exciting things that have come up. Research work session topics as assigned and update the president and vice president on pertinent information complied prior to the applicable work session. There are kind of the ideas and thoughts for this. The president and the vice president some extra oomph. I know I work full-time. To not be here during the day, it, it allows us to look at someone that may have some additional time to, um, bring information to and from the council to the residents. Any questions or concerns? No, no, this is, this is honorary title. Um, to be appointed, we would look for interested individuals who meet the minimum qualifications and term limits, and they must, uh, connect with Borough Council President to express interest in the classification of senior council member. The president will compile a list of interested individuals, discuss that list with fellow council colleagues. If there's a consensus of council on any specific individual, a formal appointment will be made at the next public meeting. The appointment sounds, process sounds good to everyone? So with that, um, there is one individual who has expressed interest in, in being a senior council member, and that would be Anita Barton. Anita has served the borough well for many years. Anita has, um, led with integrity and courage, and I think, um, would make a, a good designated senior council member. So I would like to know if there is a motion to approve designating Anita Barton as a senior council member, as the.
Mind if I, like, point of order? Shouldn't, I believe we should make a motion to create the position.
Create the position first, there you go. Thank you, Alan. No, I'm, I'm just getting all wound up.
I was enamored by your lovely words.
All right, so before we can appoint one, we first have to accept. So with that, could I have a motion to approve the designation of a senior council member in the borough council structure per the outlined job description?
I would like to make that motion.
I would second that motion.
Thank you, Kathleen. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, with all those wonderful words, I would, um, like to have a motion to appoint Anita Barton as our senior council member, our official first senior council member for the 2024 and 2025 fiscal year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Anita, it's, it's my pleasure to have you as the first official. So thank you. Thank you, Alan, for keeping me on track.
We're a team.
We are a team, so I appreciate that. Okay. Let's see.
Consider approving 109 West.
Yeah, I'm lost on my, my schedule here. All right, next up. Consider approving 109 West 7th Avenue escrow release in the amount of $197.40 plus interest. Any questions on escrow release? Okay, could I have a motion to approve in the, um, 109 West 7th in the amount of $197.40 plus interest?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider approving 223 East 11th Avenue zoning escrow release in the amount of $193.63 plus interest. Any questions related to that zoning release, escrow release? Okay, with that, could I have a motion to approve 223 East 11th Avenue in the amount of $193.63 plus interest?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, that ends that section of our agenda. Next section is public comment. If we have any individuals who would like to make public comment, they can come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record. Hearing no public comment. We are at the Request Council and Mayor Matters as applicable. Mayor Aaronson, do you have anything for this evening?
Always, President Sokolaski. So the first thing is, um, Little League has really stepped up their, um, advertising and engagement. So they want to, um, invite all of us to their, um, opening day, which is going to be April 13th at Suck Cliff Park. And they would also like to, um, advertise to the community that registration is now open for the spring. They have, I'll, I'll be posting this on my social media, but they've been posting like crazy the last week or so, um, on Instagram and Facebook. So, um, so please register. I know all these, um, little, uh, young people and babies are, uh, gonna be starting, trickling into the league, so I'm really excited to see where it goes. Uh, we also have, um, the Conshohocken Community Night at the Reading Phillies. The date is set for July 14th at 5:15 PM. Tickets to this game are generally free. Sarah and I will have some, businesses across the borough will have some, so, um, everyone should be able to get a ticket. Uh, this is our third year doing it, maybe third or fourth, so, um, I'm really excited about this partnership. And last year, the, uh, Reading Phils told me that we were their biggest community night. So, so it's pretty awesome. Not that I'm surprised in Conshohocken. Uh, I, I wanted to just give a big thank you to, um, Public Works for, um, their, their really great work getting us, um, cleaned up from all the snow and ice, and also our residents for their patience and understanding as we sort of had to change some of our track schedules, but it seems like everything worked out just in time for the next snowstorm. So thank you to the, um, entire Public Works team. And then, uh, lastly, uh, I actually was not at this meeting last year. Thomas is turning one tomorrow. I'm sure it was one of those, um, Steph and Brittany will stop accepting my emails kind of situations. But we've had a really great year. It's been awesome showing Thomas all around town and, um, having him come to all our, um, events. So, um, we look forward to the, um, the year ahead. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Frey, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, the Girl Scout Cookie Drive starts, uh, this week. So if you see them out and about, try and support a very good local organization. And buy some really good cookies because they're really, really good.
Awesome.
So that ends New Year's resolution season. Nice one. Uh, congratulate, uh, Anita on her new position. Very good. Also, congratulations, Anita, and happy birthday to Thomas. It's coming up, right? Tomorrow. That's it.
Okay.
I just wanna thank everybody. This is an honor.
Adrian?
Nothing this evening.
Alan?
Nothing from me, thank you.
And I just wanna thank, um, Public Works and our officers for, um, keeping us safe over the last couple of days with the snow and the ice. Your, um, teams have worked very hard and long hours, and we're hearing great things in our community about, um, our roads and, and how prepared and people could get to work and where they needed to go without worrying about their safety. So we wanna thank, uh, our teams for doing a great job and continually doing a great job. Anyone else have anything? All right, with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you for putting up tonight with my nerves.